Good evening and welcome to the Accounts Review Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, and the time is 6:54. We just went a little bit over. We just wrapped up our Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting. And today's agenda is BPS year-to-date budget report, discussion on warrants approval, and also unpaid invoices. With that being said, I will establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Vega.
Yep.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
And the Superintendent's present, myself, the Chair is present as well. And I will hand it over to the Superintendent for presentation.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first Accounts Review Subcommittee Meeting of the school year. We do plan to have these meetings more regularly as a way to implement some of the recommendations that we received as part of the Nice from Beckman and Paris investigation. However, these meetings are going to evolve over time as there are processes that we still need to correct and streamline, which is what I will be talking about today. So, just as a reminder, the independent investigation provided 15 recommendations, 12 of which are within the control of the school department. So, these are the ones that the school department has been focusing on. So, as part of tonight's accounts meeting, I will be focusing on Recommendation D, F, H, and M, which I'll go through. But I know you've seen this slide before, and I'm going to continue to ground our work in this slide and the progress that we are making. So, Recommendation D states that the school finance department must track spending relative to the budget approved by the school committee. So, this is one of the things that we've been working on, and you do have in your packet printed our year-to-date budget report, which is broken down by school and department and the salaries and expenses of each. So, on this report, which you have seen before because you've been receiving it throughout the year, on this report you will see the approved budget, the revised budget if there have been any revisions, and what percentage has been used to date. And so, tonight and at future accounts meetings, we can certainly revisit this document. But I wanted you to be able to see also that we have actually, as part of Recommendation F, which states that we should be sharing key data throughout the fiscal year, I also wanted to highlight that these reports, including the one that you have in front of you, are posted to our new and improved website. So, you see a screen shot here of where they're all posted so that not just the school committee can see how we are expending funds over the course of the year and go from report to report, but so can the public. So, jumping into the year-to-date budget report, and I'm going to take each of these three items collectively and talk about them now and then take questions at the end so we can go back to these different topics. So, starting with the year-to-date budget report, I did just want to highlight a few things. First, on page one, on the top, you will see that the FY '24 carryover of $7.2 million was appropriated from the city and has been posted to our budget. So, you'll see that on the top line, and that is there. Currently, as I've stated, that's sitting in the Superintendent's Office account, but at next week's meeting, I'll be presenting to you how we plan to spend a portion of that for your approval. So additionally, on page three, you will see that we also received the $6 million that was approved by City Council and transferred to our not-net-spending transfer to our budget. So, you should be able to see that as well on that bottom line. And finally, on page four, you will see in our non-net-school spending that there is an allotment of money in the amount of $372,125, and that is 0% expended in transportation because it was originally allotted for the purchasing of new vehicles. But we will not be utilizing those funds for new vehicles, so our plan is to transfer those funds into the salaries line of the budget and the overtime's account of the transportation budget, again, to cover the transportation expenses. So, one of the things you may also notice in the year-to-date budget report on the transportation one in particular is that previously we were running at a negative, you know, percentage for the transportation expenditures, but we have since gotten the $6 million from the city. So, if you look at that bottom line, even though at the top it might say negative a percentage, at the bottom you will see that overall we're at 35% spent. So, that's the cumulative. And again, I can answer, and our CFO is here too, so can answer more specific questions about that at the end of the presentation. The next thing I wanted to talk about is our warrant process. So, Recommendation H cited that the school committee needs to approve vendor and payroll warrants, which is not something that actually occurs now as a matter of process, which is why we haven't had these meetings. So, as we move towards that, this would be the correct meeting for us to discuss and approve the actual warrants, but we have to get there first. So, currently, the way the process works is that each of our school departments send their paper invoices directly to the city auditor's office. And this occurs without necessarily going through the Superintendent, CFO, or school committee, which is why you haven't seen them. So, obviously, I see them and the CFO sees them at different points in that process, but there is not a point in the process where it all gets filtered through all three of us for final oversight. So, once the city auditor receives it from all of the different departments, then they enter the invoices to create accounts payable warrants that are put into Munis. Then the treasurer's office processes the payroll warrants, and then the treasurer cuts the checks and posts the warrants. So, once that is complete, the expenses then hit our general ledger. Now, when I presented this back in November, I provided sort of two options for how we could do this moving forward. Option one would be to have BPS finance staff create the vendor and payroll warrants, which would then be signed off by BPS CFO, myself, and at least two of the school committee members. But the warrant would be created on Wednesday, so it would need to be signed and sent to City Hall by Friday before 2:00 PM in order to be processed. So, option one, some of the implications and some of the things we were worried about is what does that timeline structure look like? How are we processing it, like getting it back from City Hall, going back and forth, that kind of thing? So, we were a little worried about implementation. And then option two is to leave it as is, which is what we've been doing as we've been trying to kind of figure out what the process should be. So, we have finally worked on what this process is going to look like step by step. So, as we've thought about this further, we're going to tier out how we do this. And the first thing we're going to do is at least work on compiling all of the accounts payable and payroll for review. So, these documents are already scanned into Munis. So, what we are planning to do is at least place them in a secondary folder that can be accessed directly by myself and the CFO, but also by the school committee. So, this is just getting us to the review point. Once we've gotten that process up and running and have consolidated how we compile our accounts payable and payroll, then we'll be using that same process to submit them to the city auditor. So, right now, each of the departments submit it directly to the auditor, so they're receiving it from all different school departments, which is difficult for them and really does need to be streamlined. But as we're streamlining it, we don't want to slow down their processes either, which is why let's work on compiling them for review first. Then, when we've got that process down, then now that we've got a process to compile and review, then we can start to submit them as an entire package to the city so that they're receiving them all together. Once we've done that, our third step is to create an actual approval process for those bills and payroll using DocuSign, which we are in the process of getting in collaboration with the city. So, the city is getting it too, so we're working on this process so that these systems can work a little bit more seamlessly. And then the final step will be for us to do this in such a streamlined and efficient manner that this approval, the review and approval, is happening even before the payment is being issued by the treasurer's office. So, this is where we need to get to eventually, but as we're, again, getting to that place, we want to make sure that we are never holding up processes, never holding up payments, never holding up the city. So, it's our job to be building these processes on the back end, as we should be, so that we can deliver them to the city in a more clear and efficient way, but also give you the opportunity to review and approve. So, that is where we'll eventually get to, but just to reiterate, we're just starting out at step one, which is to compile these accounts payable and payroll so that they are in a folder for school committee review. So, that's where we'll be getting to next. So, Recommendation M charges BPS to ensure that we have internal monitoring processes and controls. And we are pleased to report that we have established various types of processes. So, these are the four different processes we're working on right now. So, first, we do adhere to the contract routing process that has been set by City Hall, and we have standardized the process to submit our documents to the city solicitor's office so that we can properly procure service and supplies. So, we are doing that appropriately. Second, we have instituted processes and next steps where supplies were ordered and services were rendered that actually fell outside the contract routing process. And we've been working closely with the city solicitor's office to address and resolve these issues. So, as you know, we are course correcting mid-year this year with the goal of doing it appropriately from the jump next time around. But right now, we are working in collaboration with the city to make sure that we are doing, we're kind of retroactively going back and doing these processes appropriately. Third, we are very grateful for the city auditor's time and efforts to audit and review our invoices to ensure that procurement procedures are followed. So, we are in frequent communication with the city auditor and are available to answer any questions or provide further detail if needed. However, the last item covers those instances where procurement requests have fallen outside of the traditional process of using a purchase order so that we kind of need to clean that up entirely. So, for example, one of the things that we're looking at today is credit card charges for shaws as well as using the Bank of America credit card, which has been cited by the city auditor to ensure that we're purchasing supplies and services with the purchase order to the best extent possible so that, again, we can be doing the additional monitoring and budget oversight. So, this is something that was done in the past, was approved by the finance department in the past, but this really isn't a best practice, and the city auditor has flagged that for us, has returned these bills to us, and rightfully so because this process does fall completely outside of the appropriate procurement processes we should be following. So, our goal today, and you have these in a folder, well, it's not today because I'm going to give you an opportunity to review them, is to sort of look through what we had done in the past, knowing that we are changing this process moving forward and that it will be done correctly. So, basically, what you have in front of you is a list of unpaid bills and payrolls that have those credit card receipts in them for your review that we can either revisit, that we'll revisit at next school committee meeting so that you can ask any additional questions that you may have. But what we're assuring you is that what you're doing here right now is agreeing to a one-time payment of this kind of expenditure and that we will not be doing this in the future. So, to let you know a little bit more about what we will be doing, so again, there was a historical practice here of using credit cards, and again, we want to move away from that. So, we were alerted to these charges by the city auditor, and they have paused payment on these to ensure that we can, to make sure that we were doing our due diligence to finalize and revise the protocols that we're going to be using and to ensure, again, an opportunity for monitoring and approval in the future. So, I think it is noteworthy to mention that the district now has one, and we have worked with the city CFO, we will have one credit card to use for very limited purposes for those vendors that do not accept purchase orders. Now, most vendors that work with school departments accept purchase orders because they want to work with school departments. The only real exception, there are very few, but one example, is the RMV. They don't accept, and we have, you know, a driving school and all of that. So, that would be an instance where they don't accept a purchase order, so we need to use their credit card. But for this one credit card, all requests to make such purchases would be submitted in writing, and the approval must be made by the school chief financial officer, who will also be the only one that holds that credit card, so could be the only one to process that payment anyway. And for all the credit cards that existed previously, those are being canceled, and we will just be obtaining the one single credit card for use in the future. So, that brings me to the end of my presentation. I'm sure you have many questions.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I will open up the floor for questions. Mrs. Oliver.
Thank you. Great. I loved all the stuff you're putting in place to stop this nonsense, but do you know how many credit cards was issued?
I don't know exactly. I think there was like 15, 14, 15, 14, 15? Yeah, about.
And all of them has been?
They're being canceled.
They've been canceled.
We stopped use of them immediately when this was flagged to us by the city auditor, but, so they've all stopped being used since that date, and now we're in the process of canceling them.
How long has this process been happening and who originally allowed this to happen?
So, my understanding, and again, a lot of this is anecdotal. We've tried to do the research on what exactly occurred, but this was a practice that was approved by the finance department in the past. And so, these were, and I mean, these were payments that were being, like, were going through, yeah, that were going through all different levels. So, they were going through the finance department, they were being approved, they were going to the city, they were being paid. And this is where, as much as I don't love that we stopped payment of bills, the thing that has come up here is that we have been able to now see some of these bad practices. And there are some where we just need to do some extra paperwork, fix it, and then do better moving forward. But the process of stopping the payments also has bubbled up some of these areas that really were problematic and needed to change. So, you know, to the city auditor's credit as well, these are things that she has been, you know, flagging for us, has been noticing over the course of the last year and has been working with the school department to try to fix. So, my only, all I know is that it had been approved at some point in the past to be able to use these credit cards. They were for a specific program that mostly runs after school. So, I can see why they maybe made a distinction for this particular program to use credit cards, but at the same time, it's still best practice to be going through the same process that our schools use, which is planning the expenditures ahead of time, creating the budget, putting in the purchase orders, purchasing from the vendors that we already purchased from, using WB Mason. We get better prices that way. So, a lot of the things that you will see in here are kind of one-time expenditures because, you know, when you're using a credit card, you're kind of buying it for the week when really it is, yes, much more difficult to plan the entire year and to buy by the month, but that is what a school district should be doing.
Perfect. None of those credit cards, any, none active employee doesn't have any of those credit cards, right?
Correct.
It's just active employees have those handled. Are they ready to learn how to do the purchase order? How are we moving forward, everybody?
Yes. So, we have been working with that department to make sure that they are utilizing the same processes that the rest of the departments are utilizing.
Thank you.
Mr. Vega.
Thank you so much. First off, thank you for keeping the report recommendations front and center and for constantly returning to them and reminding us, hey, this is what we're doing to address what was identified as needing correction. Also want to highlight, you know, the partnership that's been going on with the city side. I mean, the city solicitor in meetings, you know, with small groups, has cited improvements made by you, the CFO, Ms. Si, and that really highlights what you've done to improve city and school committee relations, which was another recommendation. Question, so you talked about the compilation process, step one right now, like, do you have an ETA on when we might complete that process?
So, I, and again, you know, understanding sort of organizations and how they work, you know, things take a little bit longer. Now, part of the reason we decided to just start with the compilation is because we already scanned them into Munis. So, we figure it's got to be that simple, right, to just, okay, scan them into this other folder too? And while that sounds simple, I know that anything in a large organization is not as simple as that and that we need to make sure that we appropriately communicate it, that we give everybody the resources that everybody knows. So, I imagine we'll start trialing it immediately, but you wouldn't see it until we're, until everybody's on board, everybody's compiling them at the appropriate time. We've worked out any snafu, but that process is starting immediately where we're letting people know, okay, here's where you're going to not just scan them into Munis, here's the repository where you're going to be scanning them every, every time you scan into Munis. And so, I, I hope, like, what month are we even in? I'm February, so I'm, I'm hoping like by beginning of April, I would have something to show to you to say, okay, here's the repository of everything and that we'll have worked out the kinks by then. We will do our, our best. We are also in the midst of budget season, and that's been going well, and I look forward to giving you some updates on that. So, I do want to just qualify that I'm asking folks to do this on top of that, but I think we can get it done.
Semi-related, you mentioned that we're still dealing with some payment discrepancies. You know, we're doing it in the middle, like you said, we'll get it right next year, but we're still dealing, like, what volume are we talking about and like what's our ETA on closing that book or chapter?
So, that's, I think we had mentioned before, and I can bring a graph next time to kind of show you, like, how many vendors we work with and how many we would have to, and I think, what was it, like 300 and something? But not everything falls under, falls over the 100K, and you know, there are different thresholds where there's a different level of work that's required for all of those. But if we're working with 375 or so distinct vendors, that's what we're kind of looking at. We have been tiering it out. So, basically, the most urgent have been getting the attention first, and we've been kind of churning out contracts, getting, like, depending again on what, what the services and what the amount we're spending is, going back and getting the three quotes or finding the state contract, then getting the contract, going through the routing process with the city. So, we've got a process whereby we approve the retroactive expenditures that's been approved by the city solicitor, and then also a process for starting, moving forward with, with how it should look. So, that way, we can clear the old payments and it's a waiver process that the city solicitor has worked with us on. And then to say, yes, services have been rendered, yes, you know, this is the money that has been spent, and now it's being appropriately procured, here's the contract and moving forward, we are doing it right. So, it's kind of a multi-step process for every single one. But I will say that they, now that we've gotten a system down, like, they come in fast and furious. Well, maybe not, I mean, I got four today. To me, I'm like, yay, four, that was very exciting. But we're, we're starting with the bigger ones, and then every once in a while, an urgent one comes up, like, oh, this one hasn't been processed yet, so we need to put that at the top of the list because this is causing an issue. I'm very grateful to everyone at the city who's been really working with us, you know, Megan, Kayla, Irene, to really kind of figure out, to kind of help us through these processes. But they're, I just lost my train of thought. They have been, they've been very supportive. Oh, that's right. So, now that we've gotten to a place where I think we've kind of proven that we are willing to work together, we're trying our best, that we're not trying to skirt any rules, it's just about like getting the processes in place, and that we've also created a budget plan with the city auditor regarding, okay, how long is it going to take us to really right the entire ship? And we're looking right now, and we're finalizing that plan in collaboration with that office, and it's looking like it's about a two-year-out plan that, that walks us through, okay, here are all the different steps. And then once we have done that and we've gotten to a good place and we've, we've proven that, I think more of the payments will be released even as we're course correcting. But at this point, what we've been doing is correcting it so payments will be released, trying to build that trust and goodwill so that the rest of the payments will be released. And then I think it'll be less of like a frenzy, but still, we will continue. That's what that budget plan is showing, is that we won't be in this, like, you know, hot and heavy mode of work that we are now. We'll be in a much more methodical, okay, here's the system, here's how we're going to do this, what's the plan month to month to month.
All right, and thank you. And I'm just going to end with a little soapbox. This is something the Superintendent and I have already talked about, but in looking at the year-to-date, right, when we look at the library line, we see that we're at 100%, but that 100% is really only $50,000. And this is something that, you know, has been on the table for a while, long before our current Superintendent took the role. We have one licensed librarian in the entire district, one. So, as we talk about ELA initiatives, as we talk about building our literacy, as we talk about, you know, some of the programming that was shown in our previous presentation, we need to address this in the budget this year. We need to figure out how to get library skills. And when we say library skills, it's not simply reading, it's about digital literacy, it's about being able to discern fact from fiction. And there's never been a more important time for those skills to be developed than the time we're living in right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan.
Just to address that, Mr. Vega, is the library, we used to have all librarians in every school, but those were cut over the years for budget reasons, which, you know, so we did, we were fully, with full libraries in every school and librarians, but they were cut over the years. And then when it changed to more digital, then there wasn't as much of a need. So, I think then more of them were cut. I mean, it was budgetary reasons. So, if we have the money to, I think we'd all be, you know, willing to, but, you know, money, I don't know, it's a big issue. But just thank you for your presentation, and I just wanted, on the year-to-date, this one, the first one in the packet, so you said that was going to be posted on the website?
It is posted, yes, it is posted on the website.
Okay, so then we, is this like the one that Mr. Clarkson used to give us?
So, we have both. So, at a previous meeting, we, the one, so we still have Dr. Clarkson's as well. That one's 45 pages or so, and what Open Architects did in collaboration with Trish Boyer, our CFO, is kind of created this one at the beginning of this year, so to make it a little bit more digestible. So, we are now working off of both. So, both are available.
They both say the same thing.
They do, it's just this one is easier to, like, if you need to look at it, like, very quickly, but if you want a more detailed view, then that one's there too. So, either one.
Okay. Are we going to post both of them or no?
That's a, I think we have posted both of them, but I'll go back and check. I know this one is posted, it's also the new website, so we're like working on.
I know some of the residents were asking.
Yes. But, yeah, we absolutely are happy to post them. It's not secret by any means, so.
All right. And also, so I was noticing on some of these for the, it was, oh, the, this packet here, before you get to the one with the Bank of America, so I'm not sure what these were under, but it said that we were given, like, food supplies for extended day.
Yes.
In 21st Century Program?
Yes.
So, 21st Century Program is the program that, is that certain schools after school?
Yes, it runs in the extended day.
But I always thought that we provided, like, snacks through our chat wells for that.
We do, we, we do.
Our own food service.
Yes, absolutely, we do. So, this is more for their, like, their no-bake programs, they're more actually instructional tools than they are.
Okay.
Yeah. But yes, you're absolutely right. In fact, when this was flagged, that was one of the first questions is like, wait a second, why? But it's for, it's for food for other things. Now, that being said, some of the things that are, like, some of the foods that are purchased, now moving forward, when we're doing purchase orders, it's not going to be possible anymore. And we know, like, as teachers too, there's certain things you'd love to buy, but you can't because, you know, you're constricted as far as what you can buy and what is available at the appropriate vendors. So, that is going to kind of change the way they do business at the after-school, but again, it would be more aligned to what everybody during the school day does, and so that's where we have to move to.
Right, because I thought that with Chat Wells Food Service, that they were even giving some of the schools' kids dinner at one point, their kids were getting dinner. So, I don't know if that went away with COVID or if it started up again after COVID because it was no school for a year and a half, so.
Yeah.
I don't know where that stands. I mean, I could ask our director of food service, Tom.
Yeah, I can definitely get the answer for you, but, yeah, specific.
But I thought that the food was always all covered through our food service, you know?
They are, and so this is really more they're using the food as learning activity.
Right, so this is like an extra thing. So, the kids are still getting snacks and.
Yeah, this isn't for eating, this isn't for sustenance, and, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that's a good distinction to make, right? This isn't food to be eaten as part of a meal. This was, you know, part of like a no-bake programs. And I saw some of it over the summer too, um, but yeah.
Right, they, they were kinda doing like a pilot with the dinners only at certain schools. But I don't think it was at every school, but I think it was before COVID. And so I'm not sure where that stands today. But, um, as long as the kids have snacks when they go to these after-school programs, because they're hungry after school.
Yes.
And then, okay, just so, um, the way we're presenting it now is not the way that we've ever presented accounts review.
So, yes, so this is a good point. So today, what you're getting is different from what you'll even get in the future. And the reason for that is because these are the bills and invoices that were sent back by the city auditor. And these are the ones that we are unable to put through one of those first three options that I provided, where services have been rendered, but appropriately procured. These kind of fell outside of the entire process. So that's why I'm bringing them before you for approval. So you won't normally see them like this, but we, I wanted to bring them to you. And we've, we've worked, um, with, um, Irene as well about, okay, since these fell kinda totally outside of the process, what is the process that we should follow in order to get them paid? Um, because we can't go back and do a contract. We can't go back and get three quotes. Like this is a totally different beast. Um, so this is why these are in front of you, because we wanna be completely transparent. This is the money that was spent. You have the list of all the purchase orders here and what they all costed. But then you have every single receipt, um, as well and what was purchased so that you have time to look through it before the next meeting. Uh, but my hope is that you'll approve this and, and certainly will answer any questions that you have, um, next week. But the, the hope is that you would approve this. Again, this is a one-time situation. This is not what you will be receiving every time. This is part of the cleanup process we're doing.
And I thank you for that, yeah, great. Um, so we, we will see it like we saw it before.
So no, I've actually looked at the report y'all got before and I have a different idea of what that should look like too. Um, but I, I will certainly bring that in front of you. Again, I really want the materials that you get and even the materials that we provide to the public to be digestible and to be understandable. And I have seen that report, it certainly has merit. But even as me, um, the one who, who knows where the money is going, I don't find it to be consumable in any way. Like it's, it's hard for me to understand and follow and be like, okay, well, how are you as the school committee getting the information you need from that packet in order to decide if we're going into a deficit? Like, right, that's what we're trying to.
Yeah, that doesn't really tell you that, no, I agree with you.
Exactly, so this is where we wanna go is I want you to have the information you need in order to know when there's a flag to be raised so that we don't, you know, fall into past mistakes. So no, there's some processes that definitely we are still doing the way, you know, they've always been done and should be done. But there are certainly different recommendations I have moving forward for reports that you'll get and accounts reviews that you'll get that I, and I'll explain my recommendations to you so that you actually have the information you need in order to hold us as a school department accountable for the spending.
Right, so the thing is, is that the city council also gets, does accounts and they have some of our things that go through there. So how, how are they seeing that like compared to what we're seeing?
So that's a great question. So they actually get basically what's here, they get all of it and they get it from all the departments. Um, so when they include, when they have their accounts meetings, they can pull up like any one of our, um, expenses, the receipts, the invoices, and so they can ask very specific questions about why was this spent? Where did this go? And that's what you all should be able to do too.
Right, right.
Uh, it shouldn't just be a chart that says paid, 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 paid. You should be able to say, wait a second, okay, here's the PO, this is how much we paid. Okay, if I have a question about what it was spent on, let me open this up and see. You should be able to do that too. So at this point, there, the, the city council subcommittee is able to do that for hours. And we wanna get to the point where you can also do that for hours before it even goes there.
Right, so that would be like they're looking at it on Munis or?
So no, they will still, we don't wanna disrupt their process, which is why I'm, I'm saying let's do this backend process where we do ours. And it should align entirely with theirs. I mean, the amounts of money should be the exact same. What they're looking at should be the exact same. But it gives you the opportunity to see it and approve it as well. But they will still see and approve exactly as they do too.
Okay.
So it'll be two eyes on, or two sets of eyes on everything.
All right, so that's really good to hear, thank you.
Thank you, um, so when I met with the superintendent and, um, TJ and Trish, um, when I first got on the accounts committee in '22, it was, Mrs. Sullivan has a copy of, uh, she could, you know, see it and pass it around so the members can see. It was very, very hard to like understand seeing invoice. We, we were getting it and it was already spent. So it was more of a question like, how did we spend this? Like it's already spent, we didn't approve it. And then we look up our policies, you know, warrants and so forth. But it was more of, of cleaning it up to understand it more, to align with our budget, to say, okay, we're spending such and such in this department, but what's left? You know, some of, you know, unfortunate, some of that stuff wasn't, uh, provided to the committee at that time because if it was broken down in this way, we'll see the trend and if we were going into a deficit or if we're not spending, why we weren't spending. So I wanted the superintendent to, you know, recommend to this committee, um, what is the best process of it being easier for us to digest and moving forward to understand where the spending trend is? Um, there was a, um, the other gentleman that took over for Bandis, he actually kinda cleaned it up a little bit more than what you're seeing now, where it was actually broken down into departments, but it still wasn't giving us the actual, um, spending of, you know, if, let's say, uh, athletics got a million dollars, it was just saying, oh, this is what they're spending on, but it wasn't breaking down the numbers of like, this is what's left. So I think that's, um, what you see with the budget report here moving forward, um, to make it more understandable, um, moving forward, so.
So that was what, that was, I've never seen it like that before.
That's, that's how I, when I first got on.
We have the tell when Tim sees it, but we, we never got it like that.
Yeah, that's how I received it when I first got on. And then it was cleaned up, um, after that with, um, uh, the other members, uh, Mrs. Ellis and Javert.
See, I wasn't on that yet.
Yeah, so it was just us four. So it was just like, what are we looking at here to, to digest this? And it didn't make sense because I'm like, what do we have? How do you read this thing? And, you know, you have POs, but it's not breaking down aligning what that will budget. So it's just like, what is the easiest process so we don't get into this, uh, what happened, you know, last year of making sure we, uh, keep the budget on track, so.
Now, before it was just like, they'd list like, okay, one of the schools that, that they out, they send the kids out, the name of that school. And then it would say how much was spent on this school, which I noticed that that was in there. But it didn't say paid or anything. It just said how much was spent on each thing that came up that month. So it'd be like a three-month period and you would see all the things that were spent in three months.
Yeah, so.
But it wouldn't tell you what was left, no.
Yeah, so that was one of the things of making it more easier, so. Mr. Gomes, for yours.
Thank you. Um, to quickly echo what Jorge said, I do like the direction where we're heading and I like how closely we're working with the city as well. Um, I do have a few questions about these. I know you said the, this is a one-time, um, approval that you need. And I see that some of it comes up to December of 2024. So we've made sure that there's no other pending or balance that might come for like January, February, or even March.
That is correct. That is correct. We did confirm with the city that these are all of the ones that fall under this category.
Okay.
These are all that have been not paid and for this specific reason.
And, um, you also mentioned that there were roughly 15 cards and we've taken care of those. Now for the individuals, I'm assuming we know who had those cards?
Yes.
Um, now that they don't have those to make these purchases, have we met with them to give them, let's say, an alternative while we're working into like finding vendors that will provide these but accept like PO and things like that?
Y- exactly, yes, we do. Uh, we are working with the department head to provide support to, um, the coordinators to make sure that they know how to, um, to, to follow the appropriate purchasing protocol.
Are they gonna be able to continue like the programs and things and utilizing the materials that they need, knowing that they won't be able to use the?
Yes, but like I said, things are, there are certain things that they're gonna have to pivot and change. Uh, but again, that's part of, you know, being in education or being in any organization where you're using ta- taxpayer dollars and you need to make sure that you are spending them, um, the best, best way possible and using the vendors that are giving you the best deals. Um, so yes, it is going to change the way they do business for sure. Um, I'm not going to say that it's not and that it is going to change some of the things that they're able to purchase, some of the thi- the projects they're able to do. Um, but we can certainly provide them support with what alternatives are.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Oliver, followed by Mr. Sullivan.
Um, quick question, the ones that departments, we have a few of them, that is at negative? Or even those one that's getting closer to basically, um, spending all their expenses amount percentage are getting really close to 100. How are we working to basically to each department to help them out knowing that so many of them is at negative percentage right now? And we're only in, in the February.
So, yes, so the ones that are at a negative. So first of all, we are going through and we do monitor this to make sure. And so that's why we're thinking about like, for example, transfers from lines that we thought we were going to spend money or had planned and we are pivoting. And so that is what's going to happen in those instances as well. So to give you for another example, um, so yeah, the buses that, a lot of that had to do with, again, we were waiting for the $6 million transfer. We will also be transferring more, um, those, uh, bus expenses into that line.
Like the system-wide, like for an example, it's at negative 56% already.
Oh, yes, so actually the CFO is here. I don't know if you're able to speak to that specific one.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I did see that, uh, this afternoon as well. And I've got a call into Open Architects. They are the ones who prepared this report. And what you don't see here is what account numbers are behind these descriptions. So I've asked them for the account numbers so I can look at each of those specific accounts to see what is going on here, uh, what's going, what, if something is going wrong, we'll fix it. If it's just a matter of, oh, we didn't budget properly, we'll do budget transfers, et cetera. So I've got a, a, an email into them to give me the details of these accounts. There could be two accounts behind this description. There could be 50 accounts that make up the number. So until I know what those account numbers are, it's hard for me to say.
Perfect, if you can just update us once you get all that information. Just because a lot of likes being negative 56 and it's some of them that's, um, literally getting close to like 100%. I just wanna make sure that we are moving money accordingly and let, and updating us where it's getting moved from to make sure the certain department has enough funds to finish up the year. But also there's other ones that, like I know transportation, we got the $6 million. That's kinda gonna cover that out. Um, but there's other ones that's already at extremely percentage, um, negative. So definitely we gotta figure out what's going on with that and how can we solve that issue?
Absolutely, so we can get you the information on all of the negative lines and why they're at negatives. Um, but this also does go back to two different things we have spoken about, which is the lack of a historic budget that was accurate, right? So we knew coming into this year that we were allocating funds as best we could without a historical budget to go from. So this is gonna be a good opportunity for us to figure out what was the actual spending and budget this year so that we can create next year's budget. So that's a lot of what you see too is that lack of historical budget. The other thing that we've been working on is the breaking down of all of the lines. Because again, they were all kind of lumped together. And so now too, as we're breaking things down into the appropriate lines that are aligned, allotted, aligned to DSE, that is too where then we see some lines going into negatives as we're trying to clean things up. But we can absolutely get you the explanations for those, um, specific, specific negatives, um, to explain. And on the backend, we are working, um, to fix those and to make the appropriate lines with the appropriate allocations in them, especially in the budget moving forward. And one of the things, of course, we always look at too is just that bottom line. Obviously, we want everything sitting in the appropriate line and nothing to be at a negative. Uh, but we do always wanna make sure too, our overall budget is not, um, overspent. And there we are at an appropriate percentage of spending.
Perfect, also like if, um, year to year, that same department's current always in negative, it's a way to basically moving forward how we budget those departments so they're never like under budget and we get the same issues of being in a negative before the year is even over like by February.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, do we have a procurement officer now?
No, not yet. But, oh, sorry to interrupt. Um, but, um, again, the city has been incredibly helpful. And so we have been working with Mike Morris. He's been supporting us as we're, you know, um, trying. We do, we did put out the job ad again, and I think we have some promising candidates this time around, so that's great. Also Attorney Si is, I think we mentioned before, there's a, uh, procurement training, one allotted to the city every year. Um, and so this year they were kind enough to allow her to take it so that she will be certified. And so she's in the process of getting that certification. So she'll be certified. And then we do actually have, um, one or two staff members who have been supporting us who while they don't sit in the procurement role, do have procurement licenses. So they have been supporting us as well.
My question is, uh, if there was a procurement officer, I see they go to Shaw's quite a bit.
Say that again?
They go to Shaw's quite a bit here on this?
Yes.
But would a procurement officer had said, let's, let's get some quotes from other markets? I mean.
Correct.
I know Shaw's is in product, but Market Basket is in this state with, this is Los Angeles, California.
Correct, so we actually probably wouldn't purchase from there at all. You're absolutely right. So we have different vendors that we are already contracted with that provide the different things that a grocery store might, whether it's supplies from WB Mason or we've got food sort of like, you know, we, um, we have Cisco for food, whether it, for culinary arts. So there are different, um, vendors that we use and that we prefer because we followed an appropriate procurement process. So yes, to your exact point, this probably would not, um, have been an issue where it would have been procured appropriately, but we are moving forward, going to make sure it is, yeah.
And the other question, disauthorized signature, is that you? I just can't read it.
Then yes, that is me.
That is you, okay. Fancy.
Thank you, the three dots are for the three I's in my last name. So that's really all you can see there.
I thought it was you, oh, is it you?
Yes.
And the other question is, uh, this, this practice has stopped now?
Correct.
This was done by a credit card?
Correct.
And there is no more credit cards out there?
Absolutely, now we just have the one that will sit with the city CFO, um, or sorry, the school CFO. The city CFO has approved it. Um, and it will only be utilized by our school CFO by, for very limited purchases.
Somebody else asked, but what happens now if they need food for something?
So they all have to go through a purchase order and go through one of our approved vendors.
So we'll never see this again?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from any of the members? Mrs. Sullivan?
Um, thank you. Um, so if we see like, um, certain lines that are getting like low, then we can, um, that might drive our decision on a contract negotiation or something. Because if we didn't have the money for it, then.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, yes, um, yes, that's a great point. I mean, as we think about our expenditures over the course of the year, we certainly have to take that into account. We are entering into negotiations. So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we'd, we'd be able to tell like if we can afford it and if we have enough for what they're asking?
You know, for this one, since this is this year's budget and next year's budget is gonna look a little, we've gotten the new budget for next year, it'll look a little bit different. So we won't be able to use these exact reports, but I think these will, to your point, they'll give us a good indication of where we are with salary expenditures over all of the different schools so that we can use that information as we.
So we kinda know what we're gonna be getting from the state by this point? Oh, okay, cuz I, I know that Aldo used to know what he was getting.
Okay, yeah.
So we already have a figure?
So that, yeah, so the governor's budget has come out. I mean, there could be some, you know, minor changes, but based, um, but we are already able to start creating our budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions by any members? Any further questions by any members? Well, on mine, I know when I was looking at the expenses, so if we, you know, look at different schools and, you know, some of them are a lot higher than others. You know, each school has their own need far as, you know, what are they, you know, spending their expenses on? You know, not making more work. Just to, you know, kind of like cleaning it up. Instead of, and I know that we brought this up during last legislative session with the you know, old administration was, that was to mine, you know, as far as I can remember, that those were all eliminated. And were basic categorized as just one bulk. So meaning instead of each school having their own expense item, so they'll be like, okay, you know, we total this all up. Let's say it's equates to a million dollars per se or five hundred and it's just one. So, you know, for example, you know, the Kennedy wants to buy paper clips or shouldn't that just be coming out of one department instead of having it at each school level that way?
Yes. So actually, as we've been going through the budget and as we've been meeting with all of the department heads and the principals, it actually has been very illuminating because we're looking at their current budget and we're determining the budget for next year. And that is a place where we can, you know, it's a little, it's more detailed than this cuz it talks about the actual salaries, the actual expenses. And one of the things we have talked about is even similar to what you see here with these expenses that could have been, you know, done in bulk or gotten through a vendor. We have a certain amount of office supplies in every department, every, in central offices, for example. And it's not, it's not a huge amount, it's a nominal amount, but I think this goes to your question about efficiency. Is, okay, well, why aren't we just bulking all of this to one office supply line for the entire, you know, central offices? Everybody tells us what they need, we order it from the vendor and that way, you know, we're not all duplicating efforts and there's not a closet here and a closet there. So these are the kinds of things that are, are coming up as we're looking at the actual budgets of each department. And things that we will do better and more efficiently in the future. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, it's, it's just like, for example, you, you go to a school and there's like, you know, $5,000 worth of paper clips because they felt like that money's gonna go away.
Right.
But, you know, one of those things is just that, you know, we all see it, you know, we have educators that are on social media, there's, you know, they're doing their fundraisers or can you donate X Y Z? And we have these expenses, so it's just like, what are we really doing to support those edu? They shouldn't be coming out of their pocket because obviously we're paying them to educate, but then they're coming out of their pocket. But it's almost like we're spending it to, to buy it anyway cuz we're paying them. So, you know, those are one of the things that, you know, and I understand like a lot of them have, haven't, you know, gone in that depth of creating that budget. But it's more of, you know, are the, our building leaders working with the educators in the classroom saying, what do you need? What's it gonna cost so we can get that dollar amount as we craft this budget moving forward?
Right.
So those are one of the things, cuz I know we discussed this last administration of, you know, and I thought it was wiped out and it was put under one. But I'm actually seeing it now, you know, I see one that's already spent all of their expenses, so it's just.
And the expenses are a couple of different things. There's like professional development, it's just anything that's not salaries. So it's not just like office supplies or things like that. And in the line by line budget, you would see it, this is just how we basically break down personnel versus non-personnel. So when you see expenses, that doesn't mean it's all like materials or things like that. It can be professional development, it can be, you know, things like that.
Okay. The, the other piece, I, I know I spoke to Representative Vega about this is, you know, literacy with libraries. And I remember a couple of years ago, you know, I did have that one person reach out and it's just like, you know, I'm trying to get some books. And there's like, I don't like, there's money there, there's like ninety thousand, how come you're not, you know, things happened. But it's, you know, how do we get there? And I know Mr. Vega's works closely with the, the library, cuz I'm one of those that, you know, we, we had libraries in every school from elementary up and not seen nonexistent. It's just like, how do we plan to, to get there? I know Mr. Vega made a recommendation of, you know, hope he's working on, I know he is, partnering with, partnering with the Brockton Library to, you know, roll something out as we craft this budget to make sure that we do have libraries and actual books and in the schools to make sure that these kids are able to grab something, not just getting on technology wise. Next thing you know, we have kids with vision problems because they're sharing at the screen for a long time. So I know I suffer with that, so. But yes, this was, I don't wanna say eye opening, but it's, you know, recommendations that was made through investigations of how we move forward with our accounts to be in line, as Mrs. Sullivan said, with city council. I don't want us to do it one way and they're doing it the other and we're not getting all the information and they're asking all the questions versus this body. So I mean, those are the checks and balances, if anything that we missed, they can pick up on moving forward. So I, I'm very happy with this. I know we've discussed this in depth of, you know, what is the easy process and how do we actually get there moving forward, so. But the other piece is on the, the outstanding invoices. I know some, I mean, some of the members, I mean, I've seen this, quite a few of these. So I think the will of the committee is to hold off on approving this so we can all review this. And then we'll add this to next week's regular agenda for approval of these unpaid invoices. The only thing is, any of, you know, this is my recommendation. Any of the questions that you have relative to some of these invoices? If we can just direct it to the superintendent to get your answers prior to the next school committee meeting. It's, it's a lot to digest, you know, I had a lot of questions when I looked at this as myself, but, you know, we're here to fix, I don't wanna say broken, but make it a lot better than what we're actually dealing with now, so.
Go ahead. So, and yes, I would reiterate that for a couple of reasons too. If you wouldn't mind sending us the questions, and we'll certainly present the information publicly to respond to your questions. But because these lived with different, you know, people, it's hard for me to know exactly without hearing the questions first. Making sure I invite the appropriate person, making sure I get, because if you ask me about this receipt, I'm not gonna know, right? And so that's part of why, if you wouldn't mind just sending me certain maybe lines that you had questions about or certain question, certain, you know, concerns you have, then I will certainly not only bring the answer, but if there's somebody who is better suited to answer, I will make sure that they're invited as well.
Thank you.
What is a, what is a total amount?
Well, that's a great question. I would, you would, here's the total. So for the Shaw's, it's, it says it's 5,974 of all the different ones and then the Bank of America's 1,539.
One thousand and what?
Five hundred and thirty-nine. So on this sheet right here, it's totaled down here.
So that is the total amount for each that we would have to approve? Okay. I was thinking more cuz it's so many papers.
So because there have been payments, that, that's a, yeah, that's a great point. But because there have been payments that were made in the past before the payments all stopped, part of the reason this got flagged too is because we, when you add it all together, we did go over 10,000. What you're seeing here is not over 10,000, but that, but it did fall under that. So this is for basically, and that's why you see the dates, like when the payments stopped. And so this is what we need approved.
Yeah, I totally agree to give us, thank you hun, to give us more time to digest every item, every payment, just to basically go over what exactly was purchased. And if we do have questions, I definitely will be sending you an email just to clarify certain things. But I do agree to move it, but still approve it next week.
Any further, Mr. Gomes?
I just wanna make sure. So I know this was like credit card purchases. Were these something that we had already budgeted for, we just only use a different method of payment or is it just?
So that's a great question. Yes, the money is budgeted for. So there, it, these, this isn't money that we didn't have, it just fell outside a process. I think that's a great, a great point.
Thank you.
And, and also, again, it was not only money that it was budgeted for and planned for by the department and by these individuals, but this is the process that had been being followed all of this time. So nothing nefarious was happening, you know, this was all following the process that had been followed and with everybody's best intentions. It's just now we have to do things differently. And so I do just wanna, you know, confirm that all of these, you know, coordinators, educators, department heads, they have been doing amazing work supporting students, they continue to do amazing work supporting students. We are now taxing them further with these additional processes because they are just the right thing to do. But nobody was doing anything untoward, you know, they were following the process as they knew it. And now we all are correcting our processes moving forward.
What's that?
One quick.
Oh, Mr. Sullivan.
Do you think there's any other unpaid bills? This is everything.
So there are definitely unpaid bills, but not that, these are the ones that we identified that, that we wanted an approval from you so that you have eyes on them, you're able to ask questions. It's not like, you know, we're being fully transparent because all of the other unpaid ones fall under those first three categories, where we're going back and contracting, where we're doing the appropriate procurement. And we may be doing it after the fact, but we're working with the city to make sure we're doing it appropriately. These are the only unpaid ones that fell completely outside of a process. So we don't, we don't have the ability to go back and course correct in the same way because we're never doing it again. So that's why we wanted to bring this in front of you, for you to approve, to have eyes on, because we don't really have another process to, to do it. And we, and the city auditor, and very appropriately so, wants to make sure that this has been approved because then it is gonna go to the accounts committee meeting at the city council and they're gonna ask questions. You know, they are going to want answers for why this was done the way it was. So, you know, wanted to get your questions, you to have eyes on it, you to approve it and then it can be sent over so that they have the ability to, to say, okay, this prop, this wasn't done appropriately, but they'll do it appropriately moving forward and so that the city auditor can feel comfortable issuing the payment.
Just one question, the, do you know the reason why these were kicked out? These, these Shaw's bills on the Bank of America out?
Meaning why they were sent back?
Yes.
Oh, because everything was sent back, cuz we were doing it all wrong. So, yeah. So these are the ones though, that, so everything was sent back. So I don't know if you remember back in October, we stopped paying the bills, everything was sent back. And so we have been working through that pile, going through, getting the contracts, making sure that things are appropriately paid and are appropriately procured and purchased. And as we're doing that, then the bills are being paid. So this goes back to that original issue where the bills had been not paid and all sent back. So now the, this is us working through all of those to get them appropriately purchased, procured and paid.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, thoughts, concerns? Mrs. Sullivan?
You said we're gonna have them regularly now?
So our next one, I believe, is April first.
It's April, so I'll give us, I'll give the superintendent and finance team to get this all in order for us. And so we'll have one in April and then we'll schedule one following in month, so we'll have that, so.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
Accountability.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, you know, like the superintendent, you know, if we can just digest this. Any questions, just follow up with the superintendent and I'm pretty sure she'll get the answers or she'll find the answers for us and then we'll move forward.
Can't wait for that.
Thank you. With that being said, do we have any other business, Mrs. Oliver?
Did we go over the warrant approval process? So are we gonna basically speak on that and how are we gonna move forward? Are we gonna move it to the way the state wants us to do it so we can get that situated?
Right. So we're gonna do a four-step process and that first step is gonna be us at least compiling everything for your review. So hopefully I'll have an update on that at our next meeting, that we've at least created that process. So we'll start with the compilation for review. Then we'll go, our second step is a, that compo, that compilation will be streamlined and submitted together rather than piecemeal to the city auditor. Then we're gonna have the docu-sign, the electronic approval. And then hopefully, by the time we've got all said and done, we'll be able to do all of those processes even before the warrants get paid. I'm, we're probably not gonna get there this year. We're just gonna start step by step with the first thing being, at least let's get them all together so you guys can have eyes on them. And then the second step will be, okay, now we've gotten them all filtered through the finance office and then going to their finance office versus all going separately. Then we'll have a electronic signature process and then we'll make sure that the timing is right.
And the two subcommittee members will be voted, situation that we've voted for two? To make sure their signatures, they won't be signing?
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring that forward, so.
Yeah, at this point, because the different committees do it different ways. And the recommendation from the investigation was to have at least two committee members do it. There are several different ways you could do that. You could have, you know, the chair and the vice chair. You could have the chair of the accounts committee, you could have, so there are several different ways you could do it. There is also an argument to be made that it only needs to be one because the mayor is already the, a member of the school committee or I'm approving it and I'm, you know, like there, so there is ability here for you all to determine what that should look like. But to start, we're gonna at least create a process whereby you can all review and at least see, see these bills.
Thank you. Just to make a comment, piggybacking from what you said earlier. I think that just looking at the bills, I don't want anybody to think that they were doing something wrong because that's what they were thought, that's what they were told. And the old administration just went out and gave credit cards. It's just a good process that we are correcting the old ways and moving forward to make sure we're doing things correctly. But just so people don't feel like we're attacking anybody, it just wasn't theirs, it wasn't something they were doing malicious. It was something that they were told to do. And, you know, you have to run a department, you have to do what you have to do. And old administration just basically hand out credit cards. But I'm very happy at the fact that we have stopped and we're moving forward to make it correct. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and just so the members to understand, like with full transparency, the warrant system was brought up in 2022, but it's like, how do we get there if we've never done it before? You know, I, I, I could say this and correct me if I'm wrong, we're ready to go. But is the city ready to, to support us because they're the ones that actually draft that up for us to have our signatures on there? So it's one of those things that, that never was happening. So it's just like, okay, in order for us to be in compliance, how do we get there? It's not gonna happen tomorrow. And she know, I, I told us like, let's start this tomorrow. Oh, we, you know, we can't, you know, but it's, it's more of working, you know, with the city side to make sure that everything meshes together. And I'll be one of the ones that were very critical with the city auditor's office of, how come these are not getting paid? And this is just a small piece of that. But we're gonna get to that process and more accountability and transparency moving forward.
And I think that's a, a great point. And when, when I presented the options originally, I think we, we were placing a lot of the onus on the city because they create the warrants to basically create them and then send them back to us for approval and then we send them. And that's where the timeline got crazy and how are we gonna do this on such a? And so I think the reason we have this new recommendation is we started to think about this a little bit differently, about how do we take responsibility for this process rather than putting it on the city? Because it really isn't for them to compile our bills and then send them back to us and then they approve it, which is why we've come up with this other process that is similar to what other districts do, where we're compiling it, we're creating it, and it may not be the official warrant, but it is all of the information that goes into the warrant, it's all the bills, it's all the payroll. You're seeing it, you're approving it. It may not be that exact document that's come from the city, but you've done the backend process. And so I think that's where we shifted our thinking, rather than putting it on them because then that would have required a lot more going back and forth and how do we do this and how do we time it? Really taking the responsibility as a school department to say, no, how do we fix this? And I think that, and they've been very supportive in helping us, you know, fix a lot of what we needed to do better. And I think this was an area where we realized, you know what, we can actually take control of this and fix it ourselves.
Correct. It's, it's, it's even. Correct. It's, it's, it's even when you talk about signatures and employees don't get paid if that signature's not on there. So if one of us on vacation needs to say, and that's why we talked about the, the docu-sign, making sure we have access to doing it. So it's a lot quicker and efficiency. So we're getting there. Uh, Mrs. Sullivan?
So on the, the thing with the two school committee members that sign it, but we would all be seeing what is being signed.
Mm-hmm.
All school committee members would be seeing it.
So that's where we're gonna start, just for more transparency, since we don't have a process at all. I feel like at least then with all school committee eyes on it, that's a better way to go. But the way it's generally done is it really is only a subcommittee, an account subcommittee, so not a committee of the whole. Uh, but the way I've seen it done before is it really is just a select finance subcommittee that looks at it. So it's not everybody's responsibility. And then the chair of that subcommittee or the chair and vice chair of that subcommittee are the ones that sign off and approve. So I'm saying that we're just putting it out there for everybody, but once we get to the approval process, that's when I'll put out to all of you, what do you want it to look like? It's not to say that you can't all sign off on it if you want, but is that the most efficient? Or do you just want to have a finance subcommittee of three people that is the ones who review it and then one person signs off? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Talk about it.
Exactly. So we have time because it's gonna take us some time to get there. But in the meantime, our goal is at least for everybody to be reviewing, reviewing it so that you can ask questions and so that we can start to build that process up.
Because our accounts is not a subcommittee. It's a full committee.
Right.
So, and because of the, the deficit, we really all need to be seeing the stuff, I guess. It's a good way to put it. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? That being said, um, do we have any other business? Our next, Mr. Sullivan?
I don't know if we can talk about it here with the, the Boys and Girls Club. Is that?
That, we'll discuss that on our regular school committee meeting. Well, we can talk after.
Okay.
Uh, any other business? Uh, so our next uh council will be in April, which will give the district more time to compile some of the information so we can move forward. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Vega properly, second by Mrs. Oliver. Show of hands. Meeting is adjourned.